And I wanted an extension position of some sort and on the whole case.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, I am glad to be here.
That's what I'm off that part about South Dakota State, you're gonna wanna be eliminated. But that's not a job requirement. Just be safe here.
Yes.
Skip right over them.
I think we could forget the week of life.
Now, way I said, now how do you over there?
And I will.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Sierra, thank you. Well, brought up ringers in today.
Yeah, it's the wind guy.
Good morning. How are you? Good morning.
Good morning.
All whites and go on, uh, he wanted to be here today, but he was able to make it. So that's one of your issues.
It's like a version of yourself.
Exactly. Well, nothing major as far as what to present to the U N S County Commission today. Just wanted to give you an update on kinda where we're at and progress we're making. So kinda on the community outreach side, as we committed, um, we hosted an open house in, uh, in the new Rockford area, uh, probably about three, four weeks ago. Had really good attendance there, allowed for Q and A, and, uh, kind of put up maps, same maps that we shared with, uh, with you the last time you were here. Uh, got some very good feedback and we've incorporated that feedback. And then just last night, we had an open house here in Besenton and, uh, it was probably a little more sparsely attended. That's a busier time of year, uh, it's, as you all know, back to school and such, but, um, we did, did have some, uh, good feedback that we received at that meeting. Um, so we're continuing to do those types of interactions with the community. Uh, most of the interaction is kinda one-on-one, small discussions, uh, but meeting, meeting with all the individuals as we, as we talked about. We're getting, you know, very good feedback and we're getting close to having our layout, uh, what we call finalized, but something that we would present to you in, uh, at the next, uh, meeting. And the plan would be is, you know, start that layout going to the townships first for permitting, and then it would come to the county for permitting, but we would be able to share the layout that, that team shared.
So the layout's a work in progress, did?
It's still being finalized, but we're, we're getting quite close, yeah. We've, in the last month's been really helpful for us to get the feedback from primarily, you know, the homeowners and, and property owners and then around here.
Feel that's on pace of where you guys wanted to be or kind of behind?
Yeah, I'd say we're fairly couple, two, three weeks behind where we wanted to be, but it was worth taking the time. Uh, as you know, you know, rushing to get something done, then you, then someone comes with a question or concern. So it's good to allow that to happen, so, you know, we're not substantial out of our schedule.
Give us a tentative timeframe as far as the work in progress briefly.
Yeah, certainly, um, as I mentioned, kinda finalizing the layout, um, in our plan. So the, the plan is to start with the township permitting at the end of September. Um, so then we would have that layout to share with you, same thing that's going to the, the townships. And then depending on the period of time, it could be thirty days, uh, up to sixty days where we would actually apply with the county, make the full application. So by the end of October, okay, is probably a good estimate at this time. And, um, we'll continue to provide an update. We don't want it to be a surprise. I'm sure, you know, scheduling hearings and, and all of that stuff, we just wanna work with the staff to make sure we kinda lay that out when people are available. Uh, that's been the progress. Uh, it's hoping to have, uh, a road use agreement to present to Brett Brent here, uh, or we will, um, it's a draft. I think what we're working through is the, um, kinda the roads that are planned and still kinda working that out. But we'll get, uh, we'll get that over to Brent. Our plan is next week, uh, and that'll kinda kick up discussions and we'll meet with the townships, uh, on a similar timeframe. Talk about, you know, the public road improvements and traffic flow and, and those types of things, so. Yeah, that's, that's kinda the, you know, primary things we've been working on. I know it, you know, we go away and, uh, but there's a lot of work happening. See our staffs in the area regularly meeting with people and, uh, really trying to get this right, so. But any questions or concerns or?
Like we get our money?
Takes, takes time, right?
Yeah, it does take time to get it right. Yeah, we wanna get it right.
Yeah.
I think we're working with Dan and, uh, you know, one of the, the pieces through the zoning ordinance with, with the primary and, and non-primary and we've conducted our side of that work and I think we just need to kinda finalize that with the county since it's a new thing. So I think we're close on that.
I heard some comment that, uh, solar was coming along with this, is that true or false?
It's false. We have no plans to build solar.
You guys do that?
What the, you gotta do that?
We do solar, but it's not in for this project.
Yeah, that was their concern, not a few people.
Nuclear is coming.
Oh, yeah, I know one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I've heard.
You've heard everything?
Everything.
You could write it both.
It's, we, we've been thorough enough, we just wanna.
Well, appreciate what you've given us in your part.
Absolutely. We think, thanks for giving us the opportunity to be here to, oh, it's great to see you all. Brent, while you're away, I mentioned that the, the plan is to come and, uh, present a road use agreement next week.
Okay.
Get that processed.
I'll be around all week, I'll even be up in the, uh, Bremen area next week.
Oh, perfect.
So we'll be up there in the next two weeks, so yeah, that'll work.
Great.
All right.
Look forward to it.
Good.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, crap man. Up with you.
Okay, um, the, uh, project up by Hamburg is finished. The road, well, roadwork project is done, it's paved, it was up till this morning, they put the second layer on yesterday and Tuesday, or Tuesday, yeah. Um, they were hoping to complete it Friday, but a lack of trucks and the long haul from the hot mix really delayed things last Friday. So there is a concern, the road top itself is in nice shape. Um, if any of you guys come across it this weekend, that was just the first layer. The second layer went on Monday and Tuesday at strike. But there was a concern that I brought up right away Monday morning with, um, the old engineer on the south shoulder. Uh, there is quite a bit of drop off in some area there. Um, he relayed my concern to Jason who came down yesterday, Mayfield. Jason and I had a, a long talk about it and they are going to work, do a little in slope work on the south shoulder for about, eh, three quarters of a mile. They're gonna have to put some gravel and make that, uh, south shoulder more. Right now, there's areas where there's over, there's an over two foot drop off. Um, it's not all the way, but, um, Jason asked me what we wanted to do and I said, we don't wanna leave it that way. And neither did he, but he just wanted to speak to me about it. So there will be some in slope work done as, but it shouldn't affect traffic. It would just be gravel and material that would be put on the shoulder to make that a more gradual. If you have to go into ditch. Um, other than that, I'm sure Jason will be here in October to, for the completion, but it is, there'll be no more problems there. Um, yeah, uh, as far as traffic control, you know, there has been a few bigger vehicles that came through, but it, we've got, they got around it. So that project is wrapped up pretty much for the most part. Um, so we will be working in the Bremen area the next couple of weeks. Uh, we will be chip sealing, weather permitting, of course, starting probably the fifteenth of September. And that'll be seven and a half, eight miles by the Bremen area and then two and a half over on County Five. We'll wrap that up in a week, weather permitting, of course. And we're working on bridge decks next week to, uh, make sure the bridge decks. We weren't expecting them, they weren't expecting to pave this road by Hamburg till next week. And they called me last Wednesday afternoon and said, hey, we'll come Thursday morning as well. It didn't work for us, so it just, it was just too short of notice, we weren't prepared. Um, so we will just send a couple of trucks to the hot mix plant ourselves next week and fix the bridge deck. And I wanted to do that before we chip seal. Um, so the chip seal, we, we will complete that in September. Um, and then in October, you'll see us start to be mowing some ditches. I was really surprised, they're on the Bismarck yesterday for pardons. And the state's already mowing ditches and, and along interstate and stuff and I, I think it's too early.
I think they just started.
Yeah, they just started, I think this week. We're gonna try to push that off and start in early October and spend two weeks making at least twelve foot cut on all of the highways like we have the past couple of years. Um, as far as the state shed, they've really calmed down. Um, I think, I don't even know, they may have even sent us a new contract, I don't know if they have, but. Um, we went out there after the meeting in August and we cleaned everything up out there with the exception of two piles. Um, the, the asphalt pile and the cement pile. The asphalt pile, I have found a use for. Um, Maddock Construction is gonna be moving a crusher into the Johnson pit towards the end of this month. They offered to give, uh, borrow, borrow us a couple of drivers and a couple of our drivers and we haul the asphalt chunks up to them and they're gonna crush them into millings for us. And we're gonna crush them right into the trucks that we haul, we're gonna haul up, dump them, park the trucks under the crusher, so we're gonna haul loaded both ways. And we're gonna bring the millings back, um, so we can reuse this, these, this material. And what it'll cost us is just, uh, a couple of days of crushing this asphalt. Um, it will be, it will give us more millings for if we wanna, you know, maybe we were taught, Buck and I have talked about putting some into Bowden shop. Um, we've talked, obviously, we have a few more that we wanna put into the fairgrounds. That seems to have gone over real good with the fair board, what we did last year. So we're gonna get reuse out of this, out of these asphalt chunks by crusher. The cement, I'm not sure what we're gonna do there yet, I wish I had an answer for you, but I don't. So I do believe that we will be able to have storage this winter at the state shed.
Where you gonna file stuff, you only bring that?
We, uh, the state says they have no problem with milling piles. They just didn't like the chunks. So, and to be honest with you, that, that asphalt chunk pile was probably started by the state twenty-five years ago. Um, we've added to it and I don't know how much of the pile I'm gonna take out, we're gonna take a couple of days with that, but I'm certainly not gonna, I don't think the county is responsible for milling our asphalt chunks that the state done there twenty-five years ago. We're gonna get our, our pile cleaned up. Um, so as far as that's concerned, right now, the only thing at the fairgrounds that Wells County has, obviously the oil tank, um, and then we have oil in it and we have a, uh, small millings pile, very tiny, and then a rock, a riprap rock pile. And, uh, weed boards got all the chemical in the building. Otherwise, there's nothing out there of ours. Um, we've cleaned everything, well, there's some culvers, but they're bringing rollaways for us, but they're culvers. So that kinda, that is kinda your update on the state shed. Um, the, we have a, a mower issue that I wanna talk to you guys about. Um, I think it was in two thousand thirteen, I might be off the year either way. Mail body, one of, one of the first Ferrises that, it was a snapper pro, but it's basically the, a Ferris. And, uh, we've been, we've used that for thirteen years and that's been our main mower that we've used at the fairgrounds. And we've put money into it, we've put money into it, and it's just been a good mower. We have the other zero turn that we use in case we need help at the fairgrounds. We mow the state shed with it, we mow the Besen shed with it, we take it down to Bowden, we take it over to, uh, Harvey, we take it over to Bremen. Anyway, it's kind of our go-to mower, that John Deere that we have. We don't use the John Deere that is at the courthouse very often. Maybe a little bit before the fair to get caught up, but I don't know that we put twenty hours on it. Um, it's a great mower, don't get me wrong, but it's got a cab and it's tough to get close to trees with. So we, it's just kinda the courthouse, uh, for moving snow in the winter. That snapper pro broke down a week before the fair. And it broke down major. And Louts over there did us a tremendous solid by borrowing us a mower. And we've had that mower all summer long. The mower, they finally found out what's wrong with, there's one part in the United States for it. It's in North Carolina and it's over a two thousand dollar fix into a mower that's probably not worth a thousand dollars. So I've reached out to Louts and the mower that we rented from them is two years old, or that they borrowed us, is two years old. And they'll sell it to us for eight thousand dollars. A new one is about twenty, we don't need a new one. But I would like to purchase this mower because it is the main fairground mower. So it would be, uh, uh, eight thousand dollar mower. I had spoke to Dan earlier this year about purchasing a couple cheaper mowers for the outshops. So we weren't always hauling mowers around, the mower outshops. Um, I kinda forgot about that because I knew we had problems with the southern mower at the fairgrounds and so we've just been hauling that mower around and mowing outshops and we'll continue to do so. But we really do need this Ferris. Because I just don't see any, any sense in the putting twenty-five hundred dollars into a mower that's hours up and that we've put a lot of parts into already and it's gonna need more parts and it's, at some point, it's just an upgrade. We got twelve, thirteen years worth of use out of this. And, uh, Louts, they didn't bill us a dime for using that mower all summer long. We're just gonna buy it. Is that all right with you guys?
We shouldn't need a motion, that's in your question, isn't it?
Yeah, I didn't think he did, but I wanted to make no worries about it.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
You gotta have more.
Yep. So that will, the, it will replace the big mower at Besen, we will also help with the John Deere zero turn and we do mow with a couple mowers out there depending on the weather and the weather, crap, to the fair. Um, other than that, I don't have a lot for you. You guys got some stuff for me? We haven't had any luck in the job search. Oh, snow removal. So, yeah, so Jeff Russ is a temporary employee that has been, that retired last October and he's come back and helped out this summer. He hasn't, he hasn't worked forty hours a week, but a couple times, but he's been a very well-needed help. He is, uh, willing to, uh, we're, put us, put a snow plow in Sykesville and be a temporary snow plow driver. And the way we have it worked out is, is that when it snows, Jeff's gonna go on that plow trip. And when it doesn't, he'll stay home.
That's a perfect scenario.
Yep. And Huey, who is working at the fairgrounds and has done just a tremendous job out there all summer long. The fairgrounds has looked great all year long. Um, has also retired March, has offered to do the exact same out of Besen.
That's a perfect deal.
So we would put him as a temporary employee and when it snows, he knows that he has to go around the route and when it doesn't snow, he goes home. And he might not work for three weeks or he might work fifty hours. So the snow removal problem is, is, I think, taken care of through this winter. I mean, we're always looking for help and, um, the right application, we would certainly entertain for a full-time job. But, um, it's just, I think we got our problem solved for the winter as long as it's all right with you guys.
We're, they manned us.
Yeah.
Yep. So, um, other than that, um, I got a call this morning from the fair board and I don't know exactly where we stand on that building that we've all talked about taking down. But they, the fair board has a few items in there, some, some vinyl siding and stuff. And I said, well, as of right now, at the last meeting, the Historical Society was kinda getting involved into that building. I said, we have, I have not been told to tear it down, we have no plans to tear it down until I'm told differently. Is that where we stand?
As far as the Historical Society, they were gonna try to figure out.
Correct.
What they're gonna do, what these are gonna do. They got some options.
We've taken a, oh, go ahead.
The building down by the front gate.
Yep. And they wanna use some, use some stuff from.
Right.
The old building.
That's why they wanna coordinate with you. But the other thing that was talked about a little bit is take the inner third, you know, take a third off each end and have it up there. I don't know if that's gonna be an option. They like to have it in the front gate because that people come in, they can see it.
Kinda where the, the old status.
Right. And they know there's gotta be some stuff that's up there.
So I just wanted to double check with you guys because I, I'm under the assumption that they're not touching it until I hear different from you or it works.
That last meeting we remember, and that's the last meeting.
Correct. So, uh, 'cause I, I told this fair board member, I said, you know, he thought we were possibly gonna tear it down soon. I said, no, we have no plans on tearing it down, it's kind of in the hands of the Historical Society. And I just wanted verification from you guys on that, I thought it was.
I think they got a fairly good plan that's, that's, yeah.
And, and they wanted, the Historical Society wants to take some of them stall fronts and where that, when you guys do the destruction or whatever, the thing you guys would get together and just, uh, figure it out. I got one other question for you.
Okay.
The, not ill-fated road west of the canal, has that got a clay project or, I, I, I'm not trying to, I didn't ask.
No, no, I'm glad you brought it up because I've spoke to several people about it. Um, the, the polite thing, the, the best thing I could tell you is forward, drop the ball again.
Yep.
Yeah, I've told them, I've talked to them.
Um, I went, I, I spoke to them in July and they kinda looked at me like, well, they thought the county was gonna do something about it. I said, no, no, we're just gonna blade out the road, we just maintain the road. It was cool. And they spoke to Kerry Susak back then. And then your, or the township, the other township has done some more work, they added some clay here a week or two ago.
Was it clay or was it gravel?
Uh, clay, I do believe, just a little bit more. And speaking with Larry Ryder this morning, they are gonna possibly do some more this fall. Kerry Susak said former township reached out to them, they got some prices and they never called them back, you know, they. So we spoke to Kerry, Kerry Shifky spoke to Kerry and he wants to repull that mile of shoulders in the spring. So basically, they got out of it for another year. But we're gonna repull them shoulders in the spring and we're gonna put a little bit more pressure on them. But as far as the commission stands, I think, and as far as the road department stands, we don't really have a whole lot to say it to township road.
We know, there's.
We can pressure, but you don't have to listen.
Can we just tell them, and, and it's a legitimate thing, I'm gonna sound like the bad guy now, if you don't fix that, we're not gonna blade it.
Yeah, they don't care.
They, I don't think they do.
They, they won't care. Right now.
Does it, does it affect anybody in their country?
Right now, there's people that are actually going over a mile and avoiding that last mile.
Right, they, they go north a mile. Kerry gets beat up because it's the blade guys.
Oh, I know, I know.
We should just refuse.
I was at the meeting and they were all for it. They were, yep, we're gonna do her, there was no problem. And they knew that the council was gonna be there.
The thing, it's not a money issue. That council's got more money.
They have money, it's not, I was just gonna tell you, it's not a money issue. Um, from the people that I talked to is, is, I'm sorry, I have to say it like this, but it, it's just not a priority, they don't care.
Who said?
They don't wanna spend money.
There?
Ralph. Ralph McShay, I think Jim English is on there. That Jim English is a gentleman I spoke to a couple times.
I spoke to him, I spoke to Al. The other one is, uh, uh, uh.
John Mydge.
John, John Deere, I gotta come like that.
Ah. So they just kind of dropped the ball on it again. I guess that's the only answer I can give you, it's the truth, it may not be what they wanna see in the.
So you think it's too late for this fall to get done?
Well, it's not.
Especially if the other county's calling clay now.
Yeah, that's a perfect time. And that's why we reached out, is, is, hey, what are you gonna do here? And, ah, we're not doing anything 'cause we haven't heard anything. Kerry said, I'm busy, but it's not like we couldn't do it, you know, the one question, we almost repulled the shoulders this fall because we thought they were gonna do it. And now we kinda planned on holding off on that. Because I, we would like to reshape the road again, um, that mile. And it wouldn't take long to do, but, um, especially after its mode.
But my ass off to Kerry, he has been trying his best.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, and it hasn't been as bad this year 'cause it's rained a lot.
Rained a lot.
From here on out, I would encourage you to call Ralph McShay and tell him that Kerry's in here.
It's gonna get tough, especially if it stays dry.
Typically, a time of year where it's not raining.
That's right, that's right.
So I mean, Corn, Cornharers will fix that maybe up pretty good now. If the clay was on there and all that track, traffic goes across it, it would be the best thing you can do.
Well, the thing is, is with, you know, if they put the clay down and you get a little timely rain, it will pack and they could possibly put some gravel over the top within a week or two. But if it, if, you know, they put clay on and it doesn't rain for three weeks, you're not gonna get a good pack. You know, and that's the only thing that worries me about the fall is, is because we don't know if, if snow is coming in four weeks or twelve weeks, I mean.
Well, what would happen if you put the clay on and you have to pull the shoulder and mix it?
Well, we would.
Well, that's what they do.
We would incorporate the gravel into the clay that they put on right away.
Right.
It would, it would add a little binder, but, you know, I mean, and would it be the end of the world if it didn't get gravelled this year and got gravelled early next year? Probably not, unless we had a wet spring, it would be pretty slimy in the spring, um, depending on how much clay they put on. But, um, yeah, I, I've just.
I encourage you to.
Doesn't seem to be a priority to them.
Call Ralph again, gonna keep nagging on them maybe. The next road that needs clay is from Dean Schmied's, it's two miles away. That one is gonna get hammered.
Sandy gravel over there, it always has been.
That one gets sandy, from Dean Schmied's, it's a two miles west. West of the new bridge. Yeah, that, that, that one, the, that one, as soon as it gets dry, it's just hammered. And that, between that road and the south road, they get a lot of traffic.
That's like I ninety-four compared to that one in Goodsville.
Exactly. They get a lot of, lot of traffic.
Other than that, um, you know, uh, we kinda are, we'll just, uh, we'll, we'll stay busy in September, we'll start mowing in October and you guys call me if you have any questions, but, um, you guys got anything else?
I've got something to say. Okay. Is there any way, I mean, we're always picking on the road because you're in the hole.
Yep.
On the budget. Is there any way, Dan, we can get all this money that goes into the fairgrounds and they're there, putting chips in? Is there something that we can itemize that it goes to the fair and not to the road foreman bunch? Is, is that separate? Is the whole? Okay, is the, all the money that's getting spent at the fair? And the road foreman and Huey, is that under the fair or is that go, the money go to the road foreman, the road crew?
I, I haven't done anything at the fairgrounds since the fair.
No, I understand that, but.
You're talking about the labor and stuff?
Yeah, the labor for the county and.
It goes on the road.
Every, everybody. Yeah. It goes on the road budget, so should we make a different budget for the fair budget? Because by the time you put all them chips in there and now you're gonna tear that building down and, you know, they worked there for a little putting them chips in there last year, were, did that go on the road budget?
Well, I mean, the Wells County.
Now there's a mower involved.
Part of Wells County.
Yeah, but that's why. You could have us under the.
This is a conversation that we largely had between twelve and twenty-four months ago. And we just decided that they're gonna run the fair and we're gonna mount the grounds and.
You know, and that, that implates the road budget a bit, but it's, but at the end of the day, money's money. It, you might lower that a little bit.
I understand that, but. I know, I know that we're gonna have, uh, uh, seven months of two less full-time employees in the twenty-five year and that's gotta help us a little bit.
Yeah, but.
You know, and, but, I mean, yeah, we can only cut so much. Oh, Dan, I think, I think you probably did get an email, correct?
Yeah.
Just so you guys are aware, the two John Deere machines in Harvey are both up to five years at the end of December here. And Dan has got, uh, I reached out to Tracy, Tracy and I have been in conversation and he sent some, uh, uh, quotes, Dan, as to what it would cost to move them machines from five to seven with extended warranty. So Dan has that information. Um, and I did tell, I have let Butler and John Deere know that our intention at, uh, at Wells County is to run these machines now for, for seven years and not five. So in December, you will have some, uh, extended warranty options and it's a two-year, not a one-year, and then we do it in a year. I think that it was cheaper to do the two-year and get it out to seven. So it will be something that you guys will be made aware of. I think he just sent this down this week. Um, I got it, so.
I had a question too, that I brought up in the beginning of the meeting. Ever truck regulatory, every, reach out to you, give any idea the work they did this spring as far as, are they looking, that everybody's abiding by the law?
You're talking about how they're killed.
Yep.
Well, truck. My, sorry, the, the weight, the weight people.
I'll be honest with you, I haven't seen the truck regulatory guys in Wells County much in the last month and a half.
Well, that's okay.
Yep.
But I, I'd like to have some feedback from what they did this spring. Is everybody abiding by the law, did every truck they picked up forty thousand overweight? Was there revenue that we got? Just a, a little detail.
Well, and also what I would like to know is, is I would like to see, and I'm sure we'll be getting that soon. Well, and also what I would like to know is, is I would like to see, and I'm sure we'll be getting that soon, um, the traffic counts from all the, uh.
Well, that's a different subject, but yeah.
But, but yeah, that, that's important too, to see, you know, what, where, where we add traffic this summer because there was a lot of counters. But no, DOT, answering your question, DOT has not refilled any at all. I spoke to them in March, April and May, and maybe once in June, but I haven't spoke to truck regulatory, probably two and a half months.
But, you know, just kind of good to know what kind of feedback or what they found here.
I know that when they were here, they got people's attention.
Well, I know one guy that got fined a million or I.
We want them to continue to make a presence because we're spending a lot of money on trying to fix some roads and.
That's right. And that's my point.
That money to be well-spent as hell as to destroyed.
Yeah. And I'm being extreme here, but if, if they're stopping people and finding that people are abiding by the law, that's great. If they're not, then we maybe wanna reach out to them and encourage them to have their presence known more often. I mean, we're, the harvest is still ahead of us. This first, this first week didn't count.
No.
This small grain wheat crop.
No, that's, that's, that's. Um, and, yeah, well, and then there was, um, K L J had a, they were taking some samples up by the bridge, so there was some, uh, pilot cars, some traffic concerns last week up by the Wells County One Bridge. As they're continuing to prep for that new bridge in the fall. Um, and Jason is on schedule with everything as far as the flex funding. And there was, I think, one township or two townships that reached out to Dan about flex funding. Um, so, um, the Lagoon project is gonna go four more all next year, um, south, uh, to the west of Esmond. Um, and I guess we just gotta cross our fingers and hope that, uh, we're accepted in, in something from the flex funding this fall.
So, we have, while you're here, there's another item on here, the snow removal.
At the courthouse? So, I did reach out to the gentleman, Kelly Houchen, uh, in August. I have not spoken to him now about it for three weeks, but he did sound, he, he basically, at that time, had told me, yeah, he would be interested in doing the, uh, doing the courthouse, um, uh, for, on an hourly basis, and, uh, he, he's a proceed thing, this is the guy, so there's a week or two where he may be gone in the winter. But he did sound like he would pick up the heavy duty snow removal slack when we have storms. Um, I can reach out to him again, but the last conversation I had with him was about three weeks ago, and then I went in and talked to Dan about it. Um, I just haven't seen him much. I've just been gone a lot.
Best question is, would you use his equipment contract?
No, he would use the county. Yeah, and basically, what I had talked to Dan about, what I had talked to him about is, is that if we got six, eight inches of snow, he would be here early in the morning to get everything opened up, but he would not babysit it during the day. Um, you know, Kami's here, and he says he just, you know, him not, doesn't wanna be a full-time employee, anything like that. He says, I don't really wanna go over to the courthouse every hour to see if there's a little snow on the sidewalks. He basically was, he was basically gonna be the guy that would come and prep the courthouse at five in the morning to make sure the courthouse was opened up for, for traffic at eight. Um, and I will reach out to him again, and that did slip my mind, but I did speak to him in early August after the meeting, and he sounded interested.
So what you guys feel?
I, I, I spoke to him.
And is he now against it?
Nope. Um, he, he will do this on an AM-only basis.
Yep.
And I said, yeah, you can't be coming back here all day long.
No, no.
If there's so much snow, and you remove it in the morning, we won't be open anyway.
Yep.
So that said, uh, it is gonna take a hundred bucks an hour though. Otherwise, he's said it's just not worth it to pick it up at four thirty in the morning.
And some of your stuff's driving.
Absolutely.
And it's, uh.
Realistically, it's gonna take them a, i- i- if he does, if we get a major storm, it's gonna take them a couple hours.
I did, I did tell him, he's gotta coordinate this with me every time. By the way, it's a one-hour minimum, and he shouldn't be here if it doesn't take him that long. But we also need to rethink whether or not we really need to open this area west of this building, but I don't think we do. Um, I think that is a waste of time. Now, do we have to do enough so that we can fill propane when needed? Yes, but we don't need to be parking over there. We got nothing. Problems with that door right around the corner that opens to the west and has no protection anyway. Park on the street.
I, I, I would be in a hundred percent agreeance with it. Um, I would be because it is, I, I've helped, I've done a lot of snow removal with the payloader over here. You were talking about the confined space and all that snow has to go over there.
That's just.
For two or three cars.
So, I think we should. Doesn't need to be as big as it maybe would have been.
So that'd be part of the job, not.
So we need to take care of accessing the courthouse, accessing us building here and over here, and the festival hall when needed, when needed. And we've been, I've always taken care of the hall.
Uh, do we need a motion to accept that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by willing to accept Kobe, Kelly, opportunity to do the story.
AM's probably. Second.
Second by Brad Welch. Any other discussion on it? But you guys can work out where and what.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Harry, now, and all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Oh, motion, Harry. Okay, thanks, Brad.
Quick question, Brad.
Yep.
I had some comments on the west fence.
Yep.
Um, there's concern of the weeds that are there, and that's not a fun fence. Do anything with it because of the mesh. It's really hard to deal with that. I have a suggestion for you, and this is only a suggestion.
If you're talking to fairgrounds, come along.
Yep, yep. There's four four-inch cloths. Okay? And we do a lot for the four-inch. And if there's a plan that we can implement, that they can kind of help out with that as a club. I know that opens a lot of canals. I understand that, but just, that was, I got comments of that all through the fair.
Well.
Just tell them, do what I heard and.
No, the one, the, the one spring, we burnt it.
Well, that would be the smartest thing.
You know, it just depends on.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the, the other thing that I, I'm not gonna be popular, but.
That takes bets down.
I would like, I personally think the west fence should go down past the four-eight, the, the, where the current FFA building is. Um, because there's really no need for it. Um, there's, there's no, we've kind of got past the fence thing on the, on the north side. It's a free gate, and it would be a lot easier to clean in there. Um, and I understand the, and if, if you go look at the fairgrounds on the south end, up by the barns, that fence is in much better shape than the fences behind the museum, behind the FFA building and to the, up to the gate. I would say take it down.
Well, Brian, bring that to the next board meeting. That's their baby.
But see, the reason I told Rent is because they're taking care of the ground. Yep, right, yep. And, and, you know, it, it's a, the, the drainage ditch there is very steep. We can't get a mower in there.
Right.
And that's why last spring, we burnt it.
Yeah.
And we got a good burn on it, and, and, you know, I mean, hopefully, we could, you know, maybe we can even burn it this fall as it's drying out. But that portion of the drainage ditch does have water. It has had water in it most of the summer.
Oh, you know as well as I do that if I mentioned that.
I know exactly.
You know what's gonna happen.
I know.
That's what I was just gonna say. You better run a bio.
Yeah, but you know, part of the biggest reason those fences were up is because many years ago, Wells County didn't have free gates. That was the way. You couldn't get into the fairgrounds that way. Now, it doesn't matter how you get in. To be honest with you, you can walk across drains. They're just gone. It's free.
Just the cars pop up.
Yep, and there, there's no cars gonna go through that drainage ditch, I promise you that.
It just, it, it, like I said.
Not intentionally, anyway.
Since you were here, I wanted to bring it up. I'm not gonna open it up.
No, no, I, I understand, Brian, and I.
Know that it will.
It is, it, it is one of the last ice horses at the fairgrounds right now.
Exactly.
You're right.
There's a lot of them agree with this.
Oh, no, no. Actually, we use this thing right now, we give this readings and it just take first approach and ride along here upside by side on the inside of the fence and get rid of it.
Yeah, don't give us county guys any idea.
I'll come.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Dan, you wanna go with the, one of the.
Yeah, look forward to seeing you guys next week. You bet.
Just a couple of things, uh, right below is, uh, I'll, I'll touch on the Andy fifth rates for twenty twenty-six first. And you'll entertain any questions you have on the budget. So it should say D Swift in the upper left-hand corner.
Where we at?
Yep. It's in your, or. So, um. There you go. Andy fifth, four different, uh, four different grades, and we were in the second highest one. So, not the worst, but certainly not the best, but we got a nine point one percent increase. So what this shows you is a single insurance policy, which was nine seventy-six ninety-four, is now a thousand sixty-four ninety-six. Um, a single plus dependent, which it shows here is employee plus child or children. Let's say it's the same. Is now eighteen seventy-four twenty-six as opposed to seventeen nineteen thirty-five. And the family, uh, is now twenty-seven sixty-eight fifty-four as opposed to twenty-five thirty-nine seventy-one. So all told, it's a nine point one percent increase. And on the family, we kept, uh, the share here at exactly ninety percent. Um, so, county will, uh, pick up the tab for ninety percent of that. The employee picks up the tab for ten percent of that. Other than that, um, it's, I'll say it's similar. Nothing is ever the same. You know, they don't change deductibles or out-of-pocket, but they change how they cover prescription ads, or this and that, or whatever the case may be. And that takes us to our budget, and the reason I, uh, inserted a new copy in your stuff here is, after we were in here last month, um, you have a total valuation that's based on all the parks within Wells County. I went back to my computer and it, it altered, but only to the two to twenty-four dollars. But I don't wanna be accused of, uh, issuing something and having you approve something, which you're a month away from doing anyway. But I have said, there can't be any other valuation changes at this point in time. There just cannot be. You can't plan and have those changes because it affects every political subdivision in which that property exists. So, that being said, uh, the difference between what I'm presenting to you and opposed to what I presented to you last month is the total valuation, which is forty-eight million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-three, and last month it ended in one ninety-seven. So, that's why it's important for you to have exactly what is here. That does not change the mill rate. It does not change any asks. In fact, this is proceeding a little bit differently under the new law this year. Normally, we would have had everything and we could enter it in the system on August tenth. We could have done this. Now, they have until October tenth. Used to be, they could lower it, they just couldn't raise it. School districts can still raise their stuff as long as they don't exceed maximums up until the tenth of October. So, I've got the county stuff in there. I've got the township stuff in there. But that is not to say that the county's not going to alter ours unless you can want to lower it. You're not gonna raise it because it's where it can be. Townships still have until October tenth. If they wanna make a change, I doubt any of them will. But school districts still can make changes. I don't have any other stuff in the city. I do have parties, but I guess with the rest of them, they'll have stuff that they have to decide on. So when all these public hearings are over, which is the seventh of October, they'll agree to anything to submit to me, and then we'll put it all on the computer and then by, and because this stuff is, is new, our software provider has to do updates, and he flat-out told us, he said, I don't think you're gonna be printing anything till Thanksgiving. So, I'll have to temper Laura a little bit because she's, she's probably.
Laura and her dad.
Now, she can put us on her calendar, but she can't.
Yep.
Will Wells overpay?
Yeah.
That's the only one, right?
I, I believe, well, I think there's two that aren't paid, but the one has told me they're going to pay. So, we just have to hire some Italian things.
So how many phone calls have you gotten? Instead of getting the estimate sent out, there's these hearings for townships now?
Quite a few. Quite a few. And the treasurer's office has gotten quite a few. I, I've gotten, and this is a big subject on the list sort of right now amongst other auditors, and I, I went in there and I said, you know, I'm happy to answer those questions. I'm more concerned about people who don't ask questions, who think they know everything. Um, but I've gotten calls and said, do we have to go to these meetings? Absolutely not. It's just information. When your ambulance, fire, township, county, soil conservation district, garrison diversion, school district, when they're holding their meetings, that's just FYI. You can go and attend and give your input if you want. Ours is October seventh in conjunction with our October meeting. We'll be the last ones to meet. Everybody else, most of them are doing it as soon as they can in early September.
Right.
And so that's, you've all gotten yours.
Oh, yeah.
And you.
Yeah.
What a bunch of work. Don't get me started. Who in the state legislature came up with some?
A majority of us.
And I'd like to know their rational reasoning for it, and then who should pay for all this? Because every township has to have a meeting is an, is an example that they normally wouldn't have had, and.
Well, prior, prior, the only ones that were having the meetings were all the school districts, City of Harvey, Harvey Parks, and the City of Pheasant. And Harvey Ambulance. Those are the only ones because they exceeded six figures of tax revenue.
I understand that, but now.
So now it's.
Before.
Yeah, before. So now it's every township, every ambulance, every fire district. Um.
These legislatures can say, we did something.
And they're appealing to the taxpayers, saying, we're doing something.
The good, the good thing that can come out of this. The good thing that can come out of this is a more engaged citizenry, because frankly, they're not.
In theory.
A number of the phone calls I've gotten have been from what I would consider highly educated people. Who, what is this, Dan?
Well, there was some explicit.
Yeah. And we, we put it out in our public information stuff, and, and, but it's a, it's a rather lengthy thing, so you would have to read all of that and then make a phone call. But in every one of those, I encourage people, I give them my cell phone number. They can call me anytime. They've got questions, and a lot of them have. And I credit them people for doing that rather than just accepting Joe Schmo's explanation over coffee someplace that's not even close to the mark. So, and I, I've, I've, I don't know that I've ever engaged in a conversation with somebody where I've asked them, do you understand this? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm more worried about those folks than I am about the people who ask questions.
But they, but the avenues have been in place before all this, that the public can go to township meetings, their annual meeting when they set the budget. That's when they should be going, you know, not now after the fact. But I'm, I'm really curious, at the end of the day, when you have these fifty meetings within, what the attendance is gonna be.
And we, we hope to be able to find that out. I'm gonna guess, and I've told many of the township supervisors, I don't expect anybody to be like, we'll have four or five at ours.
And that's fine. You, you would hope that in theory, then the legislature people did the right thing, but they have no idea what it costs.
And so, the only one of these meetings that I felt was ever attended by a sizable number of people was, this would be back in about twenty, ten-ish, when I did the school, we had to put sixteen point seven five percent in the newspaper. And you might have been on the billboard every time. And I got seventy-five people that came that night, and when I explained to them what it was, oh, yeah, that's fine. But they saw sixteen point seven five percent, and which was a budget number, not a tax number. It was a budget number, and they did not understand that, and they at least came to get information. And then they thought, oh, that's fine. Okay, same thing here, and we just had a long discussion earlier this morning. Okay? About knowledge base and so on. Same thing applies here. Okay? Um, I just don't think a lot of people have a lot of knowledge on this. They'll all claim to, but don't really understand how it works. And so if we get a couple of people to go to the Harvey ambulance, or if we get a couple of people to go to the Pheasant School District, or we get some people to come to Wells County, or somebody goes to Fram Township, that's a win.
Yes, it is.
That's a win because they'll at least be able to ask questions or maybe understand something. And what, uh, the ambulance service costs, for example, I don't think anybody cares as long as it comes when you need them. Right? Or the fire district. Okay, don't know what that, don't know that that truck costs a half a million dollars.
Well, and the, and I'm in that camp is, there's a board for that. You, you have to trust that board, and if there's a concern, call a board member, whether it's the void, fire department, or whatever, and you go from there. They shouldn't have to mandate meeting.
How many, how many people in Harvey, for example? How, how many, how many people in Harvey, for example, and three of us live in Harvey City Limits, few more, I guess, in the audience? How many of you know that nobody in Harvey directly supports the Harvey Fire Department? Are you aware of that? The city pays them on your behalf, okay? So we indirectly support it. But I would guess most people don't know that. They just assume I'm paying for that. In a roundabout way, you are. But they don't tax the city of Harvey.
The interesting part of that is the fire department, the better they are, the better rating they get.
The better your insurance rates are.
That's, that's a really big highlight. If you, if you live in the fire district, it doesn't have very good ratings, your insurance rates are up.
And this goes to now with ambulance districts, and you're probably hearing about this in your neck of the woods. Don't know if they're going to be able to stay in operation and then the other ambulance districts are not sure if they want to have that territory because it becomes an economies of scale thing and you do the job. Can you do the things that you say you're going to be able to do?
You have the personnel.
Which is to be there at a, in a certain amount of time and, and those types of things. So.
Sources are so limited in our area over here, in the rural areas. It's only going to get tougher and tougher.
And especially in the northeastern part of our county, we still have a number of people that do not, they don't pay for fire services directly either. They're indirectly supporting through their townships, City Hurstfield, same thing in the very, that corner of the county. I have really been trying to encourage them, you need to get with a program here and start levying with everybody there. Why, why the indirect way of going around this? So anyway, that said, hopefully that will be what comes out of this is, is a more knowledgeable citizenry, if you will. So do you have any questions for me on this? Again, the, the twenty four dollars difference, when you're talking twenty four dollars on forty eight and a half million dollars, it is not, it's going to change at about a hundred thousand decimal spot on anything. Okay, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't change any of the outcomes, it doesn't change the three percents, it doesn't do any of those things. Do you have any questions for me? Because obviously you'll have a public hearing in Montana.
Um, I do have a question, but, but, um, it sounds like a broken record. Is there any way that we can take some money away from the sheriff's, uh, salary? Not those deputies, they're doing their job, but with loss of revenue from a grant and non-communication, if we don't put something forward to promote communication, it's just going to keep on going. Am I, am I in left field? Am I talking to the wind or?
Well, the problem is outside elected position thing.
But we can still control. Right, we can still control the salary.
I hear you.
I'm just, I'm just bringing that forward.
Look, this, this is a perfect example of what John Q. Public doesn't know, okay? As opposed to what is reality. And it is beyond a challenge. There is one person and one person only between those fourteen hundred and some odd days from election to election. And that is the governor of the state of North Dakota is the only one that can do something about that. And I don't think he needs to be bothered about something like this, but. If that weren't an elected position, it could be addressed today.
But can we as a commission address his salary?
Yes, you can.
Okay, just wanted to know that.
Well, you do that.
Huh?
You do that.
I wasn't sure, but I had to make sure. Because I will say this, and then I'm going to shut up. Before the years end, the word communication will mean a lot to our sheriff. That's all I can say right now.
Well, not something to him, but, uh, using what other commission, this isn't the only county having.
I understand, I understand that. But if we sit here and we let it keep sliding and do nothing, that's, because our, our position as elected people is we are supposed to take care of the, the finance of the county.
That's one position that will never be pointed, which.
I understand that.
We could do something.
Right. I understand.
Communication could get a lot better. Oh, absolutely. We know that.
Okay. One question I have for you, Dan. Can you clarify, it's like if people pay early the taxes and get a five percent discount?
Yes.
Is that money ever made up then or?
No, no, it's just, it's, it's obviously it's a promoter and encourage your, uh, you know, carrotness, you know, that type of thing. Uh, but that's, that's statewide, okay?
That five percent?
Five percent statewide.
State law, right?
Yes, and it does not, it does not apply to centrally assessed properties and things of that nature. But yes, it's, and it's, if you pay the full balance, you qualify for five percent discount. It's normally February fifteenth, but that's on a weekend and then there is a holiday, I believe, on the Monday. So if you pay your taxes in full, and that means five percent less than in full, by Tuesday, February seventeenth, you qualify. If you wait till Wednesday, the eighteenth, you pay the full deal of that. And there's nothing that the treasurer's office can do that can say, ah, well, your intentions are good, that we'll give you the five.
Can't. We ran it a couple of years ago.
I wanted to talk after, uh, this, got it this other day, you know, how that works.
And it is, it slays me why anybody would want to pay, A, the full amount, B, pay penalties, C, pay interest, et cetera. But they do.
So even like our valuation, I mean, that's what it could be, but.
That doesn't change valuation.
It doesn't change valuation, but it, it will change what you could conceivably get if everybody paid their taxes on time. But you will get your money eventually.
Well.
It might take three years.
This sounds terrible, this sounds terrible, but from a revenue standpoint, we want everybody to pay their taxes on March first and not get the five percent discount.
Well.
That's, that's not going to happen.
Well, no, most, 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 and when I say most, in excess of ninety five percent pay early before the fourth of February. In fact, in fact, I'd, I'd go up to, I'd say ninety eight plus percent actually pay that on time. Um, I own some property in another state that don't have a five percent discount. You just pay it on time or they, they start assessing penalties and interest and you just pay it.
This is statewide, you're.
This is North Dakota. Yep.
Okay. Anything else there?
I don't have anything else to share because there's real, other than the twenty four bucks, there's nothing.
And then we, we finalize the budget next.
October seventh, after the hearing.
After hearing, yeah, next move. Okay, what's political subdivision?
All right, a year ago, we won, oh, there's, we won all three, six townships and I, I think we actually did thirty five of the thirty six. But the moral of the story was, I, I think we opened the line of communication, I thought it was well received. Um, I probably get more calls in the last twelve months from township officials certainly than I did before. Pretty helpful meetings, so I think that was a positive. So the question becomes, A, do you want to do that again? Or do you want to meet with others? Maybe it's fire districts, maybe it's ambulance, maybe it's cities, you know? Whatever the case may be, we're trying to bring in various departments and, and different boards here to, so you guys have a chance to, you know, find out more about what they do or ask them questions or whatever. Is this something you want to continue?
I brought this up with Dan, I, I thought that was really a good thing when we, we got to listen to the townships also, while they also have to listen to us.
I, I agree if we could somehow get them all to meet together on that day.
I don't think that would happen.
Because then you have townships that can communicate to each other. You know, the downside of us going around, first off, it takes a lot of time, but more of our township supervisors won't talk to almost township supervisors in this format, where if we could get them, and I'm defining the problem now, I'm not coming up with a solution there. If you could get them all together on that one day at Festival Hall.
Well, we do have the Lagoon, they have our Lagoon.
But how do you get them there? That's my point.
I know. That's why I don't know.
But if you got them there, that's way more efficient than what we did a year ago.
I don't know.
Well, yes and no, because, because at the meetings that we had, we got a lot more communication there than if we would had it all.